Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, set of public hearings for Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. It's 3:11 PM. My name is Ty Manzer, Chair of the Board. We have Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, County Manager Mayor Chavez, and our Clerk of the Board, Amy Davis. The first hearing will relate to property taxes for Medic One Emergency Medical Care Services. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public comment on the proposed ordinance for levying regular property taxes for Thurston County Medic One Emergency Medical Care and Services. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in person, by Zoom, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment, or some combination of those. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select announcements of public hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream through our Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance in the boardroom. Kurt Harden, Emergency Services Director, will provide information on this topic. Assuming those on the Zoom wish to testify, I will read your name aloud. I will read names on the signup sheet, three at a time. You will have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the record. Public hearing not open. Kurt will present background information of the proposed amendment, written comments submitted, and any additional information requested by the Board. Go ahead, Kurt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Let me work to see if I can, hopefully you see a slide in front of you.
Yeah, I see your name.
Okay, good. And I'm going to jump right up to the top. Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kurt Harden, Director of Emergency Services. I'm going to take a few minutes to present the background and current situation for this levy proposal. I want to say upfront that we have not received any public comments at this time. And the proposal is to restore the Medic One levy back to the previous voter-approved amount through a levy lid lift of an additional 21 cents per thousand over six years. Under Washington State law, restoration of a levy to the previous voter-approved amount requires a voter-approved lid lift. Recently, in the media, there's been some confusion regarding Medic One and TCOM. So I wanted to start off by saying that the questions regarding Medic One and TCOM, Medic One and TCOM are two completely separate agencies. TCOM is a separate, independent, intergovernmental agency that is funded completely separately from Medic One. Medic One is a critical part of the Thurston County Emergency Medical System. EMS also incorporates 12 fire departments, two ambulance companies, 700 EMS providers, two hospitals that cover 727 square miles and serve a population of 291,000 people in Thurston County. The tiered response integrates the EMS components into a functioning system. People needing emergency medical help call 911 and TCOM dispatches EMS response. In 2020, there were 33,201 EMS calls to 911. For fire agencies, EMS responses, 83.7% of the 911 calls received. Basic life support and advanced life support, basic life support is essentially our EMTs and our dispatch to every 911 EMS call, and they're considered the backbone of our system. Advanced life support are what we call our paramedics. Paramedics are dispatched when the patient requires a higher medical response. There are seven frontline medic units placed around the county and staffed 24 hours a day. On the history of Medic One, there's a lot of information here, so I'm just going to touch on the high points. Medic One was created by the voters in 1974, and it required a periodic reauthorization of a levy. In 1999, the voters made the levy permanent, and the taxable values since 2000 have increased 255%, but the levy amounts increased only 105%. This imbalance has driven the levy rate down to its current amount of 28.9 cents per thousand. Since 2008, Medic One budget has gone from 8.2 million to $14.05 million. These costs were driven in large part by one and a half new medic units placed into service, healthcare expenditures that have been increasing 5% over the last 10 years, and are expected to continue increasing at 5.3% through 2029, and the EMS call volume increasing. Medic One revenue, which has been limited to a 1% increase, has not kept pace. This chart depicts what I just mentioned about revenues versus expenditures. The blue line here is the Medic One fund balance. The green line here is the revenue coming in, and then the gray line here is the budget expenditure line. As you can see, the expenditures have been increasing, revenues have not been maintaining pace, and the Medic One fund balance has been decreasing. This shows the impact of the shortfall starting in the budget year 2022. Right here on the left of this chart is the budget year, the budgeted amount, the revenue, the Medic One fund balance, and there must be a minimum of $2.4 million in the fund balance, and then the budget reduction, that the impact. In 2022, without additional revenue, there will be a $211,000 projected impact, and in 2023, that rises to $4.5 million and continues. The expenses from these shortfalls will be shifted to the 12 county fire agencies if additional revenue is not found. The current levy amount is 28.9 cents per thousand, which is $87 a year for a $300,000 home. If adopted by the voters, the first year would be an increase of approximately 6 cents per thousand, which is $18 a year for the $300,000 home. Years two through six would see an increase of 3 cents per thousand, which is $9 per year. At the end of six years, the proposed increase is 21.1 cents per thousand, which is approximately $63. This stair-step approach is based on budgetary needs and requirements within the Medic One program. The EMS council is comprised of a broad group of stakeholders across the county to advise the Board of County Commissioners on EMS issues. The EMS council recommended that, to the Board of County Commissioners, to place the Medic One ballot measure on the August 2021 primary ballot. This restores the levy rate to the previous level approved by the voters in 1999. This concludes the background and situation for me.
Thank you, Kurt. Questions from the Board? I'll start with Commissioner Mejia.
No, sir.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, sir. Kurt, could you tell us, or the public, where they could review this presentation that you have just given this afternoon?
Sure. The presentation will be posted. It's been sent to the Board of County Commissioners, and we will post it on the Medic One website as well, so there will be access to it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Very good presentation, sir.
Kurt, I have a question on page, I don't see page number, so I won't say what page. Oh, page 10. Because for some reason, there's not 10. All the rest are numbered. The unnumbered page 10, which is the chart of projected revenue.
Sir, let me jump up here. Is it this one, sir?
No, the next.
Go back.
Go back, this one?
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
In bold at the bottom, and you mentioned this, expenses shifted to 12 county fire agencies. Can you elaborate what you mean by that?
Sure. This budgetary shortfall here will fall on mostly the basic life support, and Medic One provides funding for all 12 fire agencies for their basic life supports programs. And so that includes equipment, supplies, it includes costs for operating some of their vehicles, aid units, et cetera. So that, all that, that's paid out by Medic One to those 12 fire agencies, it's going to fall under the BLS program.
And how would they manage that shift?
I would have to defer to them, but I would anticipate that they would either have to go back out to the voters to find that funding locally within their fire agency and/or decrease response times because they would not be able to staff or man some of their units, their response units.
The county fire agencies are not sitting on large slush funds just for this purpose?
Not that I am aware of.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Kurt. Okay, we think we can go into public testimony. Calling three at a time is really if we have overflow, and we do not.
It's open, but whoever wants to follow from 152 is open.
Okay, I'm going to call two at a time, so the first person will be up, the second person can be ready on deck, and Gregory Wright is first, and Stan Moon is on deck.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners. For the record, I'm Greg Wright. I live at 3625 Gainesboro Drive in Olympia. I'm here to ask you to take action required to move the Medic One issue forward to the ballot. You may remember me as Fire Chief for City of Olympia. I retired 18 months ago. This is the first time I've been back out to speak on behalf of anything since retirement because I believe Medic One is so important. I was honored to be associated with Medic One for 34 of my 35 years in fire service. I started out as a Thurston County paramedic, certified Thurston County paramedic for Olympia Fire Department, and promoted up through the ranks of Olympia Fire Department, eventually to Fire Chief. During those years, I had great relations with Medic One, worked hand-in-hand with them over the years, and believe that they are such a quality organization, that's why I'm here today. I was privileged to have met Doctors Copus and Dr. Brown, the pioneers of the EMS system here, and really the EMS system in our whole region. I worked side-by-side with the late Dr. Tom Fell and Steve Romines. Dr. Fell was one of the early medical program directors and founders of our system. Steve Romines was longtime director for Medic One. They both shaped the system, and I was pleased to work side-by-side with them. And even in retirement, I maintain a friendship with the current Medic One staff and really value what they do for us. Medic One in Thurston County is nationally recognized as an EMS system to emulate, and it's also a great model of interdepartmental cooperation between multiple different agencies. As you've seen in Kurt's presentation, there are multiple agencies that work together to provide service. In these many years of being associated with Medic One, I was able to see firsthand how connected the community is to Medic One. They rely on Medic One. They value Medic One. They support Medic One, and sometimes, when they're having the worst day they can ever imagine, they call Medic One. And when that happens, Medic One is ready to answer their call, and they always have been. The pandemic is further proof of why our community will always need strong medical systems, including prehospital assets like Medic One. The question before you is straightforward. Will you please sign the resolution allowing the Medic One question to go before the voters on a ballot and allow citizens to show their support? Thank you, and thank you for your service at this very interesting time in our community.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Chief. Brian will clean off the mic, and we'll have Stan Moon and on deck, Margaret McPhee. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon. My name is Stan Moon. I reside at 8815 Marlene Court, Southwest.
You pull the microphone a little bit, your mic. There you go. Thank you, sir.
You have four minutes.
I won't take that time. And I am currently the Chair of the MS Council. I'm a Fire Commissioner of East Olympia Fire District 6, where I've been a member for over 40 years, starting as a volunteer, then officer, and now Chair of the Commission. Serving the MS Council, representing Thurston County Fire Commissioners Association in position one. As a member of the MS Council, I know that Medic One saves lives. Current budget is not sustainable. Support that level of effort that we are currently enjoying. As a Fire Commissioner, I know that the emergency medical care and services provided by Medic One funding are essential, and no, we don't have a big pot of money someplace to backfill that. I believe the voters need to determine if they value the lifesaving work as much as I do, especially as our region's population ages and grows. I strongly recommend that the Board of County Commissioners place the proposed Medic One tax levy on the August ballot. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Clean the lectern, then we'll have Margaret McPhee with the next name I'm going to get it right, Larry Fontenella. What was the last name? Fontenella. Perfect. Yep, I see that.
My name is Margaret McPhee, and if you don't mind, you have my address up there. We've always kept it private. And I have to use these. I'm a citizen representative on the EMSC, and until three weeks ago, I was the Chair of EMSC for the last, oh, 12, 15 years, give or take a few. I always said that I would stay on his chair until there was a levy coming up, and I thought they'd never get around to it. I take pride in saying we have one of the best Medic One systems in the state of Washington and in the country. I wish I could take responsibility, but that's other people. I first joined EMSC as the representative from the City of Olympia when I joined the City Council in March of 1993. Greg Wright always briefed me before every meeting, so I really did get to know what was going on and enjoyed the time I represented them. In 1998, Bob Jacobs, another Olympia City Council member, began talking about EMSC having a levy that would fund Medic One for five years, top six. He made this proposal to the EMSC because he thought it would save money by not having to go out to the voters so often. I don't think anyone had in mind 21 years. And we have been able to last this long because the executive directors of EMSC, the Budget Committee members, and the full membership of the Council were not just frugal, though they were, but adept at keeping equipment running smoothly and running with just enough Allergies, sorry about that. We maintained an organization that was on the leading edge, but not the bleeding edge. A year after that levy, I moved out of the city and retired from the City Council and became a citizen representative, representing the Board of County Commissioners, even though I haven't met two of you. And Ty, I think I'm your representative. A year after that levy, and I learned to appreciate that Medic One is a county-wide system, not just a district system. As my husband and I have grown older, we have called for medical service a few times. Just 11 months ago, both paramedics and EMTs arrived at our house in tandem after being called. They worked so well together, it was hard to tell which was which, the EMTs or the paramedics. And that's as it should be. It was cooperation at its best. Every year, the EMSC was presented a budget where the income seemed to go up, but so did expenses. Then the income graph, as you saw on Kurt Harden's graph, started to go down, but the expense line didn't necessarily, it tended to go up. We are in a place where we need to refresh the income. The carryover was always just large enough to pay for equipment or order that was already... is that really four minutes? I've never spoken for four minutes. And I just want to encourage you to vote to let us go on the August ballot and keep us the great system that we are. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Larry Fontenella, followed by John Pettit.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak with you all. My name is Larry Fontenella, for the record. I am the MPD for Thurston County Medic One. I'm a physician. I work in our busiest ER in the county at St. Peter's Hospital. I'm humbled and proud and honored to be a part of this system for the past 10 years. I really, I can't say how gifted I feel that I was able to come into and inherit such an amazing position. Thurston County Medic One, it's not hyperbole to say that we have one of the best systems, not only in the state but in the country. And that's attested to by our cardiac arrest rates. It's attested to by the fact that citizens, not just Margaret, who knows, but citizens that don't know, can't tell the difference between the team members because they work that well as a team, whether they're responding from one of the 12 fire districts, or the three ALS agencies, or the two private ambulance services. And that's something we really strive for. You know, it's funny, the late Steve Romines, I fondly remember looking back, projecting, well, you know, we might need to go for a levy lid lift in a couple of years, and then a couple of years, and then a couple of years. And I'm afraid now it seems like that couple of years is up, and we're now faced with the position where we can either move to put to the voters whether or not to increase revenues, or we may have to cut services. Or that's my fear, is that we'll end up having to cut services, which, on the surface, may not look like a lot, you know, when we think about, well, you know, maybe we don't run this crew 24/7, you know? But unfortunately, one of the jobs I have is to sit on our CBDQI committee where I listen to responders call in with their emergencies. And part of that, we review is CPR cases. And I will tell you, when somebody calls, and when they are overwhelmed, and they don't know if their loved one, who's not responding, is breathing or not, and when you listen to them counting out compressions and asking, is someone coming? You know, when you're listening for one or two minutes, 30 seconds is a lifetime. Same thing when your child can't breathe, you know, if there's something obstructing in their airway. Seconds count, minutes count, and the people that are dedicated to doing this job do it for a reason, and they're dedicated, and they want to continue to provide that excellent service that we've established as our baseline. And that really depends on the financing, you know, unfortunately. So I don't know how much time I have, but I'd like to also entreat you to put this forward on the ballot in the fall. Thank you.
Okay. We'll have John Pettit, and then...
And then I'll go to Zoom, and then the conference.
You see some folks on Zoom, so we'll go to Zoom next.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live out of Rich Road, and I support putting it before the people, letting the people have a chance to vote on it. I do think that the information that you have might not be quite as clear because it kind of indicates $63 over what's about a six-year timeframe, and it's actually a cumulative total that increases the current levy rate up 58% over the six-year timeframe, which is considerably different. I know the county would love to increase your property taxes by 58% over the next, you know, six years, but we're limited to 1% per year. So while I am supportive of the idea that the levy should be put before the people, it was noted that currently it would represent $87 for $300,000 worth of value. And then it would go up to about $105,000 for the first year, $114,000 the second year, $123,000 the third year, $132,000, $141,000, $150 per thousand of valuation, I mean, for the house, you know, that $300,000 house. So I just think we want to be very clear about how much more tax that, when it's presented, people have an exact figure. Now, if I'm wrong about my numbers, I'd be more than happy to hear it, and I just want to make sure the facts are correct, but from reading the proposed levy, that, in fact, is what we're looking at. I probably personally would rather say, hey, let's increase it 6 cents for the next five years. Let's increase the levy rate 6 cents across the board, total of 6 cents, and have that increase that we need right now. Okay? But I'm not a real big fan of levy lifts, but that's given. I support you moving this forward. Let it go on the ballot because the people should have a chance to voice their opinion. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. County Manager will move through the participants on Zoom to see who would like to give public testimony. You have four minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm going to be going on the order that I see on the Zoom screen. Mr. Stephen Slater. Please unmute yourself. You have four minutes. Thank you for joining us, Chief.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to the Board. My name is Stephen Slater. I am Fire Commissioner with Southeast Thurston Fire Authority, and I'm also Deputy Fire Chief for the Bald Hills Fire District and an active EMT responder myself. And I would like to say I appreciate the Commissioners finally taking this up. I kind of feel we should have gone after this a lot sooner than this year, but this is when we're doing it. So we need to do this and get this out to the people and get it passed and get it, help and support the fire districts. As a Fire Commissioner, I spend a lot of my fire tax money supporting EMS operations. And Medic One does provide us with some relief in that, but they're limited because of the budget that they have. So I'd like to be able to say that we're able to still provide a great service to the people. I'm very proud to hear that so many folks see that we're operating smoothly with all the partners that provide the service, and I look forward to us getting this passed through by our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Mayor Foster. Would you like to put a testimony this afternoon?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. I am JW Foster. I live out on Mill Road in Yelm, and some of you know me in my day job as Mayor of Yelm, but I'm addressing you today, Commissioners, as JW Foster, citizen. I have to tell you, we've come a long way. As a teen in the '70s, I watched emergency on TV, when more than half of the ambulance companies in the United States were owned and operated by funeral homes. They had you coming or going. Flash forward to 1988, when as a paramedic myself, I was looking for the best community and the best system to serve. Nikki and I were fortunate enough to move to Thurston County, and I joined the Medic One team. And then, as now, our system was demonstrating how fire districts, municipalities, and most importantly, the voters, could put together the standard of care for a prehospital emergency medicine service system. And though I retired in 2013, that team still sets the standard and is still saving lives. Cost-efficient and responsible since its inception, we should give the voters the opportunity to continue to support medical... opportunity to continue to support Medic One and the entire team of first responders, E M Ts, and paramedics. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Judy Wilson? Ms. Judy Wilson, would you like to provide testimony this afternoon? Let's move on to the next person, Mr. Steve Conan. Would you like to provide testimony this afternoon? Please unmute yourself. You have four minutes. Good afternoon for those members of the public who have joined us this afternoon via conference call. If you would like to provide public testimony related to this public hearing associated with Medic One, please unmute yourself, state your name, where you reside in the county. You have four minutes. Answer.
So that concludes the public testimony. Is there any follow-up questions from the Commissioners to Kurt, or any further discussion before we close the public hearing?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. Then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I would move to close this public hearing.
Second.
Been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Public hearing is closed.
And for your consideration, Commissioners, is for you a motion to consider approving this ordinance as presented to you, but please don't feel that you have to do that today. This is just an option for you based on the public testimony you have received this afternoon.
I would like to make a comment, sir.
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank all those that came and testified today, and I, sir, am prepared to make a motion. I would move to approve an ordinance relating to regular property taxes and authorizing Medic One to add the ballot measure to the August 3, 2021 primary election.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any further discussion on the motion?
I do think it's a long time coming. Thank you. That's my comment.
Just would like to thank everyone who came today and provided testimony.
Okay. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, and the ballot measure will be on the August 3 primary ballot. So we're going to move to a second public hearing.
And that's a different Zoom.
A different Zoom, so it'll take a moment, and I do thank everyone for being here to support this and give their input. Very knowledgeable set of public.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners' public hearing for Tuesday, April 13, 2021, 3:45 PM. My name is Ty Manzur, Chair of the Board. We have Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Carolina Mejia, as well as County Manager Ramiro Chavez and Clerk of the Board Amy Davis. The topic of today's public hearing is an amendment, proposed amendment to Thurston County Code related to Board of County Commissioners' meetings. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public comment on the proposed ordinance related to regular, special, and other meetings of the Board of County Commissioners by amending Chapter 2.02 of the Thurston County Code. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in person, by Zoom, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, please visit Thurston County homepage online and select Announcements of Public Hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Ramiro Chavez, County Manager, will provide information on this topic. Assuming those on Zoom wish to testify, well, first I'll read names on the sign-up sheet. Assuming those on Zoom wish to testify, we'll read your name aloud. Thereafter, each person will have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and area in which you reside in the county for the record. Public hearing is now open. Ramiro Chavez, County Manager, will now present background information of the proposed amendment, written comments submitted, and any additional information requested by the Board.
Thank you, Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners in their regular meeting on March 16, 2021 authorized to set the public hearing for today. Legal notices have been published on the newspaper record on March 23, March 30, and April 6. The purpose of this public hearing is for you to provide public testimony related to meetings of the Board of County Commissioners, regular meetings, special meetings, and all their related meetings. R C W 3632080, parentheses, one, requires the Board of County Commissioners to hold regular meetings at the county seat to transact any business required or permitted by law. R C W 3632080, parentheses, three, authorizes the Board as an alternative option to hold regular quarterly meetings outside the county seat within the county if the Board determines by motion that holding a meeting at an alternative location will be in the interest of the greater citizen engagement. Whereas R C W 3632090 authorizes the Board to hold the special meetings as provided in R C W 42.30.080 at the county seat. In addition, the Board is authorized to hold the special meetings outside of the county seat if agenda items or items are of unique interest or concern to the citizens involved on that portion of the county. R C W 42.30.070 requires the Board to provide the time for holding regular meetings by ordinance resolution by law, by laws, or by whatever other rule is required for the, to conduct the business of the Board of County Commissioners. The Board has evaluated how it can continue to be more effective and meet the needs of the public in conducting the business of the county as a Board of County Commissioners, also as individual Commissioners who strive to be more responsive and transparent to their constituents. The Board also finds in the interest of the public, of the public, to specify and make changes to Chapter 2.02 of the Thurston County Code. Chapter 2.02 includes a description, the proposal, official meeting room, also defines the regular meetings, which include regular daily meetings, regular quarterly meetings, regular budget meetings, as well as actions of regular meetings, agendas, and cancellation of meetings. Also includes on this proposal outlining the requirements for special meetings, special meetings outside of the county seat, joint special meetings with other counties and other jurisdictions, notices of special meetings well-defined by statute, action on the special meetings and cancellation of the special meetings. This particular proposal also includes sections related to minutes of the regular meetings in all the meetings where the Board of County Commissioners conduct business, executive sessions, adjournments, and continuances. There is also makes a reference on this proposal related to attendance of meetings by telephone or video conferencing, which is, that seems to be our normal day-to-day activities. And lastly, there is a section related to public records index. I just want to provide the Board additional information. This particular section of the ordinance will be deleted from the final version, and the reason is the Board enacted Resolution 15845 back in December of 2018, where all this requirement was aligned to the open public, sorry, to the public records, in which the Board created a new chapter, which is the Chapter 2.130, where this particular section is already aligned. So the result of this is not recent to have both, on two different pieces of the code, the same information. So I just want to provide that as a matter of clarification.
Did you say December 2018?
It was December 2019.
19.
The 3rd.
Okay.
And that, the ordinance was 15845, and that is specifically related to the public records officer and the public records coordinator in association with all the public records requirements. So it was more of an alignment of the different requirements. With that, I open for questions for, from the Board.
Commissioner, questions for Ramiro?
So just clarification on that last part. Are you saying that is going to be removed?
Yeah. The public records index, which is the 2.02050, will be removed from the proposal.
Thank you.
Questions, Commissioner?
I guess just kind of clarifying that same thing. So there's more work to come on this issue.
Yeah. Today, I'm not expecting you to take an action. So just to be clarified, this is additional information that comes your way.
Then we can go to public testimony. The first two names are John Pettit and Glenn Morgan, and if you guys want to swap places, you're welcome to do that.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit, live on Rich Road in East Olympia. I have obviously had a little opposition. I'm sure you've received some emails from me. I think we started this whole process because I had been very rigorous in my explanation that there is either a regular meeting or a special meeting. There is none of these other meetings out there, such as, such as even agenda-setting meetings or other things. You have notice requirements, and I'm all about the public getting to know what's going on. One of the things which I will take is I have sent you a revised edition to exactly what you're looking at, and it was profiled after the Kitsap County edition, but under your current ordinance that you're considering that we're actually talking about right here, there is not a provision that there will ever even be a meeting. There may be a meeting, or there may not be a meeting. There's no timeframe. I cannot imagine that you have an ordinance written that doesn't specify an exact time that you're ever going to have a meeting. That's part of the reason why I rewrote the ordinance with the information I provided, was because you need to have specific times so the public has an opportunity to speak. I did appreciate seeing that you intend on moving out and having an evening type or a late session so that the public has more of an opportunity to meet. That's all a thumbs up on that one. I'd prefer you do it more often than just once, once a month. I'd prefer twice a month at least, but once is better than none. And it's certainly better than just when you happen to have an outside meeting somewhere else out in the county. Now, one of the things which I have great concerns about is agendas. If we're going to recategorize all these meetings in order to avoid the process of what the Open Public Meetings Act requires, which is a proper notice, we need to do far better on what an agenda is. I know that you guys just come into your meetings, they say, well, we're going to talk about, we have an informational meeting for you. That doesn't mean anything to the public, nothing. Okay? I think you ought to require that anything that's going to be dealt with, you guys have 72 hours in advance on working days, you know, working time, because getting it Monday morning isn't good enough. Okay? And the idea, under your current way you have it written, I have to wait till 9 o'clock a.m. on Monday to see if you're going to have a meeting on Tuesday. Okay? And today was a great example of what happens when there's a glitch in the system. Okay? Because there was a glitch in the system, you didn't have your morning agenda-setting meeting. Okay? Being specific, providing all of this information is very important. I am glad you're removing that one portion about information, but I got to tell you, we've got to do better on the minutes. I need to be able to look at the minutes of every meeting you have. Minutes are required by law of every single meeting, a written form that I can look at, but we're not there. And now I'm told we don't even want to create a list where I can just quickly go to something. I think you, as Commissioners, might want to go back to minutes and say, let me think about this. I want to remember it. But you're not even available to get that. I'm going to encourage you to work on it. I hope you actually consider when you come to a final conclusion, what I've sent you as a revised edition as a means to move forward. I encourage you to do better because we do have to solve this problem between regular meetings, special meetings, and everything else. Thank you.
We'll have a cleaning of the lectern, and then Glenn Morgan, followed by Kevin O'Sullivan.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. It's, it's fun to be here. It's been a little while. My name's Glenn Morgan. I live between Tonato and Rochester. Commissioner Mejia, I think it's the first time that I've actually been able to testify since you've been on the Commission. And the main thing I wanted to address here, of course, is, and I'm going to just go with the baseline assumption, all three of you have substantial experience with the law, either with a law degree, law enforcement, or work in the courthouse. And a common theme that I've had in dealing with public testimony here in front of this Commission since 2011 has been a consistent pattern of what I believe is really bad and consistently bad legal advice given to this Commission on a regular basis. This proposal's been drafted by staff, not by the Commissioners, and I've always considered this kind of part of the staff infection that we've had at Thurston County in an effort to try to resolve. It puts the county in bad position in the future. There's a reason why six of the top 10 judgments in the risk pool have come out of Thurston County in the last 20 years, and I think many of them originate with just bad legal advice in the beginning, and that creates a cascade effect. And I think this proposal is no different. And very specifically, my biggest concern with this proposal is somebody who testifies in front of jurisdictions all over Washington State. And I've worked as extensively as I can, and I'm a big fan of the Washington Coalition for Open Government, which has gone down this road in every conceivable way for decades. And they have posted best practices. It's very easy to figure out how to conduct public meetings, agendas, minutes, and the maximum transparency possible. And this proposal, primarily with this, this first section where it talks about regular daily meetings, it is the worst proposal that staff could have put together for you. And I will tell you why, because it's specifically written in a way to define public meetings as an eight-to-five event, five days a week. And that's in an effort to avoid violating the Public Meetings Act when you have a meeting that's not been noticed correctly. And I have done videos about problems in the past with Thurston County, going back eight years now, on failing to comply with the Public, Open Public Meetings Act, but you don't solve that by then changing the goalposts and making it so that supposedly every day and every minute of every working day is, is compliant with the Public Meetings Act. That is a specific invitation to litigation. There is a group of people in Washington State that are looking to sue a jurisdiction foolish enough to go down this road, and Thurston County seems to be stepping into another litigation trap. And the other thing that that also opens you up to is that, as the Supreme Court has ruled, that anybody has the right to record any public meeting in time. And if you are open to subject- And if you are open to, subject to the Public Meetings Act, eight-to-five all the time because you're always in a meeting, then I could go around and, or somebody could go around recording you at all times and everything you're doing because you're theoretically in a public meeting at all times. Now, I realize that they're saying that they're going to suddenly change the schedule all the time. But again, this violates the spirit and intent of the 1972 initiative that citizens have tried to put together with the Public Meetings Act. And I think it's also a violation of the statute and would subject Thurston County to a lot of problems. I actually think I testified on the 2015 ordinance, version of this ordinance that was, that you've, that this one, proposed one, is actually supposed to repeal in addition to the 2019 version. The 2015 version is actually substantially better in the way that it actually has some very specific times, that it says these are our regular meetings. It's clearly defined where they are, what you're supposed to do. And I think it's important that we go back to something like that that is more transparent. This, this, the way this has been drafted, it encourages people like me and others who are concerned about challenges and problems in government to note what's being concealed and why staff is making an effort to try to make it difficult for people who care about government to conceal it and make it harder to figure out what's going on. I want to echo what John said about the agendas. An agenda with nothing on it is no agenda at all. That's embarrassing. And that is foolish, and it's not open government either. Minutes that have nothing in them is not compliant with the law either. And I'm glad that you're taking off that last section. I missed that in previous testimony. And I'm glad that that last part is being removed from this meeting, although I'm a little concerned about some of the PRA implications with the statute otherwise. So with that, thank you so much for being able to testify here. I hope this is rejected as written and that you come up with a different version. Thank you.
Kevin O'Sullivan.
Hello. My name's Kevin O'Sullivan, and I live outside of Lacey in the county. Okay, that survives. Thank you, Commissioners, for letting us come up and speak about this today. When I was first shown this, I was alarmed. And when I was County Commissioner, one thing that we could always count on is when the meetings were, and then if there was an agenda that was going to be printed, everybody from Evergreen to Yelm to everybody knew that this was going to happen at two o'clock on Tuesday. This is open-ended. I, I am like gulligested that, that... I mean, you could just have whatever meeting and not tell anybody. Or people who don't normally read the newspaper or read the newspaper for a reason that's not printed that day. It's, it's just, it complicates things. And it's, therefore, it, it kind of makes it difficult for citizens to be able to understand when the meetings are and what the agendas are. I mean, it's clear, you know, and it's clear to me. And when I doorbell thousands and thousands of homes, and I find that people expect open government, period. I mean, they don't want to hear any ways or shape or form that you can hide behind a time or hide behind this. They want to know what's going to happen, on what day, and what's the issue about. So they can come. They can make a choice. And so I, this is too arbitrary. And so obviously, I'm speaking against it. I wish the Commissioners could go back and revisit this thing and talk about open government because this is not open government to me. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. That's it for the signup list. I don't see others in the boardroom. So I don't see anyone on Zoom, so check the conference call.
Good afternoon. Those members of the public who have joined us via conference call this afternoon, if you would like to provide public testimony, testimony related to our proposed revisions to Chapter 2.02 of the Thurston County Code, please unmute yourself, state your name, where you reside in the county. You have four minutes. None, sir.
Okay, then that concludes public testimony.
Before you close the public testimony?
I'm going to call for any further comments or discussions. County Manager.
Yeah, just for the record, the written public testimony closed yesterday at five o'clock. And in your pocket includes two written testimonies that Mr. Pettit alluded to the fact this afternoon. One received on March 17, and one received on March 12, in April 12. And those are included in your pockets. No other comments have been received on this particular proposal.
Any questions or discussion at this time?
I do have a question of the County Manager.
Go ahead.
Sir, on page one of five under the new ordinance being proposed, at the bottom, it says Section 1, "The Board hereby rescends ordinance number 15817 and resolution 15109." Do we have copies of those included in our material here?
We have provided in the past, but I can certainly give you copies of that.
As we go into new discussion, I think it might be beneficial just to have those available.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Also, at the next time that the Board addresses this, make sure legal counsel is present.
Yep.
I, I can check with you. You may need to have executive session, but...
Yeah, there's, we can discuss whether we, warrants an executive session or not, but yeah.
At a minimum, we'll need legal counsel present.
Legal counsel will be part of the follow-up meeting.
I'm sure.
I have a question in regards to process. Once this is revised, is there going to, is it going to be open to public comment again?
That is entirely up to you, really. This is a requirement, but you can have as many public hearings as you deem appropriate.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
I have no further comment at this time, sir.
Great. Would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I would move to close this public hearing.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. And we will recommence for Board of Health at 4:15.
Okay, thank you.